You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the June tenth twenty twenty four meeting of La Porte County Council Board Commissioners Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to the um La Porte County Commissioner slash Council Joint Workshop regarding the complex and a couple other issues that we're working through here. So if everybody please stand for the pledge real quick. Mike.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interregional, representative, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all forms.
But thank you for the lead.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Guy Di Martino.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, what's that?
It's on.
Okay, good. Okay. So we're going to discuss three issues tonight. The first issue that we're going to change the order a little bit because we have some folks have to leave is has to do with the Juvenile Services Center. The second issue that we're going to talk about will be the cooling of the annex building and issues with that. And the third, we'll talk a little bit about the flood complex. So I guess first regarding the JSC, I I see that judges on the line also. I'm going to ask Mr. Pageak to discuss that because he's the one who's been looking in that into that. I haven't discussed. I haven't really worked on that.
Sounds good.
Yep. Good evening.
Evening.
Did all of you receive the submission from La Porte County Project Management or the quote?
Would it came out, I think, no, towards the end of last week?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay.
You all have it in your pack.
It's all right here in front of you.
Okay, thank you. In any event, apparently, obviously, there is a problem with the generator and we have been renting a generator now for the past couple of weeks, Andy?
Couple of weeks.
And.
Three months.
Three months, and it costs approximately twelve thousand dollars a month?
Yes.
And so it costs twelve thousand dollars a month to run this generator, number one. Number two, the lead time to get the new generator is thirty one weeks. So every month that goes by without ordering a generator or hemorrhaging money, in my view, um per month with renting this generator, and I believe the quote came in just south of two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, two hundred thirty two.
That includes the rental during that time and the new generator? No?
Just a just.
Just a generator.
New generator.
Yes.
Yes, that that quote is just to install the new generator. That doesn't cover the temporary generator that it's currently there.
Size wise, uh, we have two generators out here. Is that pretty equivalent to what we have outside the building right out the back door here?
Size wise, yes, pretty equivalent. Um, it's a two hundred and fifty KW, which is the size generator that would be needed to basically support the um load that that building uses. Um, it would be in between a couple of the size generators that are out here. Um, but yeah.
And it's, you know, and since we house juveniles, we're required, from what I understand, to have a generator operational and available. So I I don't want to cause problems or be accused of doing anything without a bid, but we need to speak about this because every month that goes by, we're spending twelve thousand dollars and we have a thirty one month lead time.
Thirty one week.
A week, I'm sorry, thirty one week uh lead time. So I just wanted to open this up for discussion. Uh, technically, at the price point where we're at, if we're going under normal purchasing requirements, I don't believe this is a public works project because we're now all trading a building. This is a an item or good pursuant to the code. Uh, you know, we should invite bids. But if we look at this as a unique purchasing uh opportunity under a special purchasing statute or on or uh, I know Mr. Di Martino might not share this idea with me, but under the emergency exception to the health, welfare, and safety, because we have the kids there and we have to have a generator, I just wanted to open this up for discussion, be totally transparent and public about it because either way, uh, you know, we got to spend some money on this. It's not. It's not a choice.
What if what if we first, before we pursue these other avenues, check to see if the state QPA has generators?
I did.
Or the or the national um program?
Sure.
To see if it's because if it does that, then it's already done. So what we've met the bid requirements.
Yeah, a couple of things. I looked under the state.
The generator by itself.
Yes, I could not see that. And if this gentleman would like to speak on the technical aspects, I was educated by a La Porte County Project Management. This isn't like just buying a generator somewhere and plugging it in. It's a lot more involved than that. I see you shaking your head, Mr. Cronk. So if you'd explain that to the council members, I appreciate it.
Yes, I can. Um, so essentially, um, like we discussed, there's a temporary generator currently at the JSC. Um, the current permanent generator that is onsite at the building um has been pretty problematic over the last couple of years. Um, I personally, myself, have worked on it as well. Um, and we just can't seem to get it reliable. Um, the unit is a nineteen ninety eight from nineteen ninety eight. It is a natural gas unit. Um, and we've just been battling problems and problems and problems with it. Um, it's getting to the point to where a lot of parts from it, specific from Generac, that's a Generac unit, are getting obsolete. Generac doesn't offer certain parts for that unit anymore. So we've also been battling that at the same time. Um, I do know that pretty much the controller, the brains for that unit is completely obsolete. If that was to go bad, you would have no choice but to replace the entire unit itself. Um, in that quote, also involves replacement of a service entrance twelve hundred amp transfer switch for the um CAT unit as well, um, which would get relocated next to the electrical switch gear that's in the in the electrical room now. Right now, the one that's currently there is kind of in the middle of the room. I think that generator maybe was added onto that building at some point. Um, so that's all figured in with that quote as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Rogers. Would you please explain to would you please explain to council members why we just can't buy a generator out of the box and use it?
Um, so a generator right out of the box is, I mean, they're not going to sell a plug and play generator that size. That's going to work for the load that that building pulls.
So what do you have to do to fit it to the building?
So um, what we'll have to do is the the CAT generator that is in the packet that each one of you have um is quite physically bigger. It's a diesel unit compared to a natural gas unit. There is a natural gas unit there. Um, that would require demo of existing unit, new concrete pad, new feeders into the uh the twelve hundred amp transfer switch. Um, so there's quite a bit of work that's entailed in replacing this unit.
So what what actually wrong with the old unit right now? How do we find out that we needed to what part needs to be replaced as a current?
So right now, the issue with the current unit is the ignition system in the unit itself is completely obsolete. We we can't get an ignition system for it.
When it's weekly test, it wasn't.
It won't weekly exercise. No, it just it won't start up. It the ignition system, because it's a natural gas unit, requires ignition spark. Um, the ignition system is going bad and and there's not a replacement for it. It's obsolete.
Rob, could you explain to the to the group here why opting for a diesel over a natural gas generator?
Um, so we've had really good luck with CAT units versus Generac units when it comes to their bigger units. Um, mainly, we opted for a diesel unit because they're just cheaper off the bat. They're they're quite a bit cheaper than what a natural gas unit is. So cost.
So if we were to look at lead time and balance this out, would the cost for the rent, if we were to have a shorter lead time on a natural gas unit, would it would it balance out? Would it counter the with the cost of reduced rent time offset that cost?
Um, so essentially, when I contacted the manufacturers, it it was looking like whether it was a natural gas or a diesel unit, we were looking at a similar lead time on the units.
At what point in time did you become aware that there was a problem with the existing unit?
Um, a permanent problem with the existing unit? Uh, back in March, when we decided to put a temporary unit on on the juvenile detention center itself because we pretty much deemed the existing unit nonreliable.
What are we spending presently on the temporary unit that we're running?
Twelve thousand dollars a month.
So it's urgent now, but it wasn't urgent three months ago.
That's one of the options.
I don't think that was this gentleman's call. You know, we get your point, but I'm with you, but I don't.
Being brought to our attention now versus then. So, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rogers. Uh, Councilman Keel, fair question. I learned about this, don't hold me to this, maybe three weeks or so ago, just in passing, when I when I found out about this issue. Obviously, when you hear that number twelve thousand uh a month, um, you want to act on it. So that's why we're having this today. It's just, it might be a little bit too late for your liking. I understand that, but we're here today and we have to exist as in the world as exists today.
And there's no possibility that this temporary unit at twelve thousand dollars, we couldn't just go, we'll take that one. Just leave that one here and we integrate it into that?
Hmm, not as a permanent unit, no. I mean, this temporary unit is basically on a trailer.
Take the tires off of it. I'm just wondering, I mean, if it's, could it be, you know, I you guys are the experts, not me, but.
Essentially, the unit that we would like to put on the building is that unit, just not on a trailer.
Right.
Essentially.
But that's, I guess my question is, is if the lead time is thirty one weeks and we have one sitting there, can we talk to the manufacturer and go, how much is this one? We're going to pay him approximately ninety plus thousand dollars for thirty one weeks of rental. Well, I mean, if we're going to spend money, we could have it. We could have this issue resolved in a month. Just saying.
Right.
If it's an option.
Counsel.
Counsel President. Good evening. I'm Andy Skiat. I work with Robert at Marcus Electric. Um, so the issue with the temporary that's sitting there is one, it's a mobile unit on the trailer. Two, it's um connected with temporary cables, so in a temporary fashion. And one of the main goals on the replacement generator is to get the appropriate transfer switch. So currently, the controls on the temporary gener- generator are connected in a in a manual fashion. So when Nippsco had the outage, that the auditor heard the boom that he was on the radio, um, they lost power at the JSC and we actually had to go out there and manually start that unit. Um, so it is supposed to start automatic, but everything is done in a temporary fashion. So I believe Robert has the paperwork. The transfer switch was a longer lead time than the generator, correct? Yes, so the transfer switch is thirty to thirty one weeks and the generator is twenty to twenty two. So the actual one of the main goals, not, we need to replace the generator because the one that's there does not run, but the transfer switch that's there would not appropriately communicate with the new generator. So one of the main goals is to replace that transfer switch that has the thirty to thirty one week lead time, get that inside where it should go and rework that service.
So the generator that's sitting there that we're renting couldn't be.
It could not.
Converted to work. Okay. Mr. Yagowski, do you have a question?
Um, I guess the terminology you're using is not reliable is not the facts. And so if the the old generator we have, you keep saying not reliable, not reliable. It either doesn't work or work.
Um, we had the best mechanics at our shop, which we work on generators all the time. Robert's one of them. He's a motorhead, as I call him. We have a couple more motorheads. They cannot get that unit to run. So um, is that the one you pulled the turbo off of or is that another one? So they pulled the turbo off it. They've tried to rebuild it. They pulled the ignition off it. They tried to rebuild it. We have three guys. I mean, Robert tears apart diesel trucks top to bottom. I mean, does the whole thing, the whole engine. Um, we have another couple of guys that are really good with engines and electrical communications. Nobody can get it to run.
I have no problem. We're going to spend a lot of money and we can't use the word not reliable.
So it's it's a little bit more than nonreliable.
Yeah. The terminology, your terminology, but it doesn't do well with us when we're trying.
Yeah, we've we've pulled the turbo. We've pulled the ignition. We've pulled everything apart. So also when the.
So it just simply does.
Out the exhaust. It also has a design fault, which which every time it rains, we've tried to put a flapper on it. Somehow water gets in the exhaust. So then it won't start because it can't breathe. So you got to go out there, ether it or whatever, get it to start, blow that water out of the exhaust. So the work needs to be done.
Public comment, it doesn't work.
Yes, correct. Yes.
So the other question is, so the generator you're temporary is adequate enough for this service?
Uh, it's the same size, correct?
It's actually bigger.
It's actually bigger.
Yeah.
So like the same company as rentals, they don't have a rental that that's not on wheels? Because I mean, we rent those all the time. They they come in on skids or whatever else they come in, come in on. I know the same thing like.
Hey, having dealt with McAllister in the past, most of their stuff comes in on a container, comes in on a trailer.
Right.
They're designed just for pull up to the building, plug in for temporary amount of time and then leave. But the most but the biggest part of their business is going to be dozers, excavators, things like that.
Was that who you're looking to get it from, McAllister?
Yes, yes. And and Robert did price comparable units and the they were more expensive, correct?
Correct.
So they were more expensive.
Didn't you say the transfer switch is the necessary part anyway? So it's still going to be thirty one weeks, right?
You need both. I mean, I can't imagine purchasing a new generator that's in excess of a hundred thousand just to buy the generator and leaving a old transfer switch that's controlling the thing and they don't communicate and you try to patch something together. I don't see the point.
They got to communicate.
Yeah.
When you talk about the controls being on a date, what are we talking about? Are we talking the difference between Monicon and Allen Bradley PLCs? Or was this something that's?
Uh, the control board specific to their design. They keep integrating them and getting them where they show the fault codes and the old stuff. I think it was the A or B controllers. They just keep going A, B, C, and and they're so far down the line now, they won't support that old equipment.
So one of the problems I've seen we had in the past, and I I declared shenanigans on it, was not you, but we bought some generators, other other service, not through you. Um, was they're trying to get you into buying a program for us changing oil and things of that nature, so ridiculous amounts of money. And we said, well, we have people that can do that stuff. What's the service? Then we ended up finally getting to drop that because it was their so-called service plan. Is there something that we're going to be forced in the future to keep for the rental or for the ownership of it?
Um, currently, we have the service contract. I believe it's for seven or eight La Porte County generators. Um, I'm not sure if that gets awarded through the Board of Commissioners or through the council, but don't quote me on this. I believe each unit is approximately, some are like one thousand two hundred thirty six, one, some are one thousand five hundred and thirty eight. That's off memories to service each unit per year.
Agreed with.
So this would be the same.
But you missed my question. But so my point, my point of conversation was is that they use it or the one we bought, we had to use theirs for a period of three years.
No, you would not.
Okay.
You could put that on our service list or any other contractor you choose to use to service your equipment. And to answer Mr. Keel's question, sorry, you know, Robert, you don't want to respond inappropriately. Um, obviously, we had notified, you know, La Porte County personnel when we put the temporary unit there. So um, I can't speak on internal communications between the county. You know that, but but obviously, we notified when we couldn't get it running. So.
So a question for Mr. Pageak. So you're proposing that we skip the public works statute, go to special purchasing instead and not bid it out in the interest of time?
In the interest of time, I'll let. I'm floating the idea in the interest of time because we're spending all this money in the meantime and it's hooked up temporarily, as Mr. Skiat said. When we had that power outage, they had to go there and manually reboot it or restart it. And we have juveniles in this building, okay? So and by all means, if the council doesn't feel comfortable with it and we just go through the normal bidding process and that that's fine. I just, everyone needs to understand what money we're spending in the meantime.
Do we actually have a choice between two things here?
You always have a choice, but it's about money.
But the issue is that lead time is the lead time. The issue is we're three months behind. So that lead time from seven months, we're now looking at ten months of rental because we haven't done anything in the first three months. So the longer we delay bidding it out, whatever avenue we go, this needs to be a very high priority of getting this new generator ordered, period.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. And, you know, if this wasn't a a place where we have quote unquote custody of people and having to have this generator, the different story. And again, I I just want all of you to make an informed decision. Uh, I understand. Any concerns you might have. And Mr. Skiat, I'm going to put you on the hot seat here for a second because I know you do a better job than I can. For anyone to spec out this generator, what's necessary, and I know it's your work product that you put into it, but can you tell us generally or the council generally what has to be done?
Sure. So, you know, you have to size the transfer switch, obviously, based on the building service. And then you need to have some idea to load in the building, decide to kill to the size to kill while the generator. Then once you size that, then you need to pick the options on the generator as far as remote enunciator, you know, et cetera, stuff like that. Um, diesel, you have to decide which run tank you want, how many hour, twenty four, thirty six, forty eight. Um, and then obviously, you would need someone um to decide on your behalf where that transfer switch would be located, uh, where that generator would be located. And then there's going to have to be uh probably two outages coordinated to install that generator. So one to remove the old transfer switch and then another one to tie the permanently one permanent one in. So there's going to be a couple outages involved where the building is going to be down. Um, ideally, some of that work would be done by the temporary generators there so that you can use a temporary generator since it's already sitting there and you're paying for it to power the building because the whole building will be down. Um, you're going to rework a twelve hundred amp service. So so that's quite a few conduits. So there's going to be some planning and specking involved. So.
Plus the site where with the new generator is going to go.
That is correct.
So so let me ask you this. How how what how long would it take to put together a spec on the generator and the transfer switch?
Well, I spoke with our county engineer, Mr. Sullivan, to ask him if he could assist in that. He said he would. We and he needs to get the plans. I think the building department has it of the electrical schematics, if you will, with the building. I can't tell you how long. I don't have the answer for you now. Uh, but I can obviously get back with everyone on that from Mr. Sullivan. And at the end of the day, uh, council members and commission members, I I just want everyone to understand. I know you don't like being put in this position right now, but here we are. And please understand, if we go through the bidding process, which I'm more than happy to do, that's that's fine. Just understand we're spending twelve thousand dollars a month and that's and that's just so you get that.
Twenty hundred fifty thousand dollars that you the number came out, is that including installation, everything?
Yeah, that's everything. I believe the generator package, do you remember offhand?
A hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven thousand was the generator package and the transfer switch. And then there'll be like quite a quite a bit of material because you're going to rework that twelve hundred amp service. So that'll be all new wire. So that includes the generator, the transfer switch, the concrete removal, the old equipment, the material for the contractor to install and labor. Everything but the rental, nothing but the rental because the rental is expensive, obviously.
So I'm looking at note number one, uh, disposal of old generator unit by that disassembly is included. Our disposal, the disposals at our expense separately.
Um, we put that on their standard in case some people want it for scrap value, you know, I mean, metal with scrap price. If if the county wanted, obviously, it's yours. It's your generator. If you didn't want it, then we could put it on the trailer and haul it off.
And I'm essentially answering my own question, but the the reason for not using the existing pad is because we're going to utilize the temporary generator.
The temporary generator on a trailer, it's my understanding that the new pad was for a new location. It's a different size.
Correct, yes. The new generator will have a day take underneath it. We propose a diesel unit versus what's there now as a natural gas unit. So the pad will get larger than what is currently there.
Okay. Um, is the entire building serviced by this generator or is it?
Yes.
Essential versus nonessential?
Whole building.
Whole building.
Whole building. That's why it's the twelve hundred amp transfer switch. It feeds everything.
Okay.
I've got a question on the natural gas. I know you explained before, natural gas is going to be more money than the diesel. Think is still just as reliable or or how much money or difference are we talking?
I believe a diesel unit is more reliable than a natural gas unit.
Okay.
And much cheaper to service.
Okay, that answers it. Thank you.
But on the same car, you did say that you have extra cost, the pad and concrete and all this stuff. So is it really a wash anymore? Are we just are we going are we going generate for generate at this point? If we would buy right now a gas, we would be able to, natural gas, we'd be able to put it right where it's at.
Uh, we we don't know that for sure because we priced a diesel. So if the footprint changed on the new model versus twenty five years ago, you could still need a new pad.
We're not necessarily, we threw some stuff back forth. Not necessarily diesel's cheaper. By the time the end of the day, it might be the same cost because of concrete pad and all this stuff.
I'm going to say diesel is cheaper because we have, even if you do a natural gas or a diesel with the new transfer switch, we still want to rework the service. So to pour a new pad, have the new conduits for the service and the control roughed into the building, start the old generator to have the outage would still be more economical than having the building down for the entire time while you try to reuse the same pad, which would have all the conduits in it, and then you try to remove the generator, remove the wire, cut those conduits outside that pad. Then you'd have to tie them into the building, get them into the new transfer switch inside, all drain the outage, which would be which would be on premium timer while the generator was running, the temporary burning diesel. So I'm going to say at the end of the day, either way, you're cheaper with the new with this unit. Because you 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 can rework it. If you pour a new pad, you can have the twelve hundred amp conduits and all the control conduits in the building into the transfer switch. Whereas if you try to go with the same unit and the same pad, none of that work can be done beforehand.
Mr. President? Yeah, I'm right here. Hey, Randy.
There you are.
Um, I I just got a couple of questions. I'm thinking outside the box here. I see that Judge Alavizos is on Zoom. Hey, Judge, can you tell me, how many kids do we have in juvie right now?
Uh, well, today, I don't know. I used to have the daily report, but I'd say eighteen to twenty.
Oh, that many?
Well, because we because this shelter side is usually pretty full. And we were going at only two or three on the secure side. But when the gun by the gun toting kids and stuffs came into town, we've been uh very close to full on the secure side uh on and off over the course of the last few months. So, yeah. Um, but since I have the floor, I just wanted to say for the last time, since I won't be here next year, but for the last several years, I've been saying that, you know, in two thousand and eight, when the control over the funds for for DCS things switched from the local budget to the state, I decided we are going to charge the state for their usage. And that amounted to over two million dollars last year and ten million dollars over the over ten million dollars over that time period. And I simply asked at one point, since the building is, I'm pretty sure, thirty years old, it was nineteen ninety two, I was the council's attorney when we were first started talking about building it. And so I think it was built around maybe ninety four. Um, that um, it is a lot of things that are obsolete. And we've we've, you know, we had a parking lot you couldn't drive through for years until finally the commissioners paved it. We had roof problems. We've had a lot of things. And it's, I just believe if this isn't warning you again, that we should take a percentage of what we get from DCS every year and put it into a non-reverting fund that sits there for whenever we have these emergencies and we don't have to wonder where we're going to get the cash from. Yeah, um, and I that's my kind of story.
That kind of cancels cancels out. It answers my question. It cancels out what I was kind of thinking, like I said, outside the box. I didn't really realize we had that many kids.
Excuse me, Commissioner Razinsky, I'm sorry.
Wait.
Commissioner Razinsky, I'm sorry. Just want to let you know, as of May twenty fourth, the numbers I had from Director Campbell at JDC was ten on the secure DOC probation side, five residential DCS probation, two day reporting, three Nova, La Porte, two Nova, Michigan City. And so Judge, if you want to explain Nova as I forget what that means, but.
Those are those are day programs. They're not. They're not there all day. They're partial. They're partial day people. So and we get paid for that program too, but we only get paid like seventy or eighty bucks a day as opposed to four thousand dollars pay for our full timers from the DCS folks. Um, so my point is that, you know, it is not only saves us money because we don't have to place our kids anywhere, but we are making a decent amount of money. And I would hate to loot, you know, kill the goose, kill the golden egg because we don't have money to keep it. And and I know originally I said we should just say ten percent, but really what needs to happen, somebody needs to go there, take a look at the building, get a a capital improvement schedule for replacing everything, add in some, oops, the generator broke these, and come up to what? You know, how much money a year we need to put sock into it and then just take it out of the money we're receiving from DCS. But that's just my suggestion. If you're building, you run it, we just hit there, you know? Yeah.
Well, where I was going with that was you could save twelve thousand dollars a month if you transferred the kid to a different facility. But uh, it doesn't sound like that is feasible at all. I didn't realize we had that many kids and we got that much money. And I don't know what it would cost to transfer them to a different facility. It probably wouldn't wash out to.
Will be a lot.
Saving money with the of the twelve thousand. If I had to get away from the twelve thousand, that's just not going to work.
And if I may, sorry to answer Councilman Yagowski's uh question more specific. Robert has it here. So. So the equipment package only, which would be the generator and transfer switch, no installation materials, no labor. Um, for the proposed CAT diesel unit is one hundred seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. For a new Generac diesel unit is one hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And for a Generac natural gas unit, equipment only one hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So there's approximately a seventy-seven thousand dollar swing there just for natural gas.
Couple of quick questions, um, is this current generator the original to the building?
No, no.
I I don't believe so. I believe that this generator was added to the building, was an afterthought after the building was built. Just by seeing how it's wired and whatnot. And it's permanently attached to the building right now, it's it's fixed to it, it wouldn't be removed.
Electrically, yes.
And same thing with a new one that would be going in, it's permanently fixed to the building. Thank you.
So this one may be either for Judge or for Attorney Paycheck. The requirements from the state when it comes to having emergency power. What is the, what's the bare bones minimum that we have to meet? When it comes to, you know, uh juveniles in custody.
I I do not know that off the top of my head. I can tell you though that we have to receive, we have two licensing. We're, we are licensed from the DCS for this non-secure side and from the Department of Corrections from the secure side, so we have two sets of standards. Um, I'm sure if you give me a day or two, we could have, we can go through them and find out. But obviously, the ability to have twenty-four hour electric service must be one of them, otherwise they would have told you that.
Yeah.
But I can confirm that if you need me to.
Just wondering if it was available for thought, and again, like, kind of like what Commissioner Razinsky was talking about, out of the box thinking, how can we? Look at this differently.
We uh, we get inspected and uh, there are like a hundred points that I mean six. It's um, hates every year and that that we meet the standards, we usually come out anywhere from ninety-seven to ninety-eight. Scores on them. I I don't know how many points this would be, I don't know if it's a, if it's a, if it's one of those things that you actually we have to have. No matter how, what the rest of the score is. But it just seems like you have to remember, even though we don't like to think of them. At, it is a public safety issue, these are kids that are half, that are either. A public safety problem themselves or are. Having safety problems visited upon them. And so, um, we really don't wanna be without power in that place, because these are fragile kids both ways, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And so I understand why there would be uh the requirement to have this. I couldn't point you at this point, because I didn't even know what we were talking about today until now. Um, whether it's at the DCS or the IDOC um standards. But I'm sure I can get with Director Campbell and the folks in those places and and find that if you invite it tomorrow.
I don't think there's any, just more of a, of a question, I mean, off the top of my head, the thing that would come to mind is uh, emergency lighting. Wow. Um, and anything related to, let's say, security systems or cameras, things like that. Even talking.
It's a thought, though, it seems like the unit itself is a hundred and seven. And a lot of it is gonna be installing what size unit you have to put in there. So I would imagine that if you made it, you know, twenty-five percent smaller, you're not saving twenty-five percent of the costs. Yeah, because the machine is only cost a hundred and seven thousand, so if you get by with an eighty thousand machine, I'm sure you're still gonna have most of those installation costs, though. I I don't know, that's just.
Is it possible?
But I wanna talk, sorry.
Thanks, Judge. Is it possible to eliminate the question of the state QPA or the national program? Can we, can we have somebody? That is knowledgeable about these programs? And I'm not saying the people in this room aren't, but I mean, to look and and see if there's somewhere out there, there's a program or QPs. QPA where it's it's, uh, there's a generator in there that.
Matches on.
Matches this.
I'll let Mr. Skia talk about that. Again, can we just go look for a generally sized?
It's not, it it's a program that it you you could still usually get the generator wherever you want. But it's 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 a program where they've already bid these out. So it could be that they use these for the military, other things, this and that, and so they go ahead and they they bid out these things. We've, we've done it with with fire from fire trucks to, we did it with ambulances uh not that long ago. Where there's a national program that that it's the, if the program, they're already bid out. So in other words, you don't have to go through the bid process, because the, either the federal government or the state has already done that for you.
I I understand that, but that's for the generator and what we'd have to do.
Hold on one second. Let me, so. The work, I mean. This could be separated because. Are you saying that this is a custom-made generator or are we saying that this is a model number XQ something, something, something that we can? What what's the, what's the issue with the generator? I'm hearing two different, I understand that the work and the programming and all that, that that's, but the generator itself. I mean, I, it's a model number, right?
So I I hear both sides. I think what needs to be done, which I would be happy to do if someone can help me, I don't have that capability. It's like it work, we have a GMC number, where we go buy a truck. We tell them what truck we want, we give them that number and we get a guaranteed price. Truck A might be more than Truck B, but our price is set. So Mr. Novak's saying if it's McAllister, if it's Generac, whoever, if that plan is in place, then the county would call them.
It's like a new plan Ford.
They would say, we want this generator with these options, and they say, here's the price you buy it for, and that price is locked in. So if there's a plan, which I don't know how to look in that on my county, if there's a plan, then I'd be happy. To work with whomever on the county level to provide the information to get it bought under that plan, but I don't know how to look if there's a plan.
Still have to, since the lead time, we'd still have to bid out the connection.
The service. Excuse me, Mr. Skia. I just wanna make sure, so to do that, to work with that federal or state agency for the Q program. We'd need your work product to give them the specs and dimensions for what we need, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, in essence, I believe.
Are you volunteering your work product?
For that purpose, sure.
Alright, thank you, I just wanted.
I I I'm.
Probably not a good business decision to say no. Just, just.
I'll repeat it again, yes.
Mr. Gal, so so while we're.
Should we have, sorry, oh, sorry.
Sure. So while we're um, while we're looking for that, um, it seems like the number one hangup of the additional ten weeks is thirty-one weeks for this.
Transfer switch.
Transfer switch. It's, you know, ten weeks, uh, you know, we got twenty-four.
Two and a half months, thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars worth of um.
Rental.
Worth of rental. Is that, how how, do you know roughly how much that switch is?
I believe it came as a package price, correct? So the transfer switch came as a package price with the generator. And was the Generac transfer switch a Generac switch or an ASCO switch like with the CAT? Were they prepackaged or were they?
Generac is a Generac switch, but CAT is an ASCO switch.
So you have to decide what you're gonna buy in order to order the switch first.
My my thought there was as we're running down the rest of this stuff, perhaps, we special purchase the. Uh, you know, do something on a special purchase statute perhaps for just the switch, then we still have ten weeks. That kind of buys us the ten weeks while we're trying to figure out the rest of this theoretically.
If you're gonna commit to the CAT, you could do that.
Well, what is the cost of the switch? Do you have any idea by itself?
Lump sum pricing when they.
Yeah, it's all.
Thirty thousand.
Roughly, so it it's a thought, I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, okay. So we all, we all declared that, I think we almost all declared it needs to be done, there's not a question about whether it does and doesn't. So the meeting we have here, of course, could be, I'm asking uh the attorney, can I make a motion to of support?
No.
No motions here.
Okay.
We're just taking information.
Do I ask you about, do I ask you questions? I couldn't see through your eyes.
They, yeah, I, my glasses, you don't wanna hear the story. I'll I'll have these for a week. But I mean, but obviously, we don't have a meeting till the twenty-fourth, I think. So um, and you guys got a meeting?
Uh, yeah, next week.
Next week. So, um, but we need to get, we need to get going one way or the other. Because is what's killing us is this rental. Yeah, every week that goes by.
You're gonna spend more than half of them.
Yeah, our our next meeting is on the nineteenth, but there's nothing saying we couldn't, you know, with forty-eight hours notice, we could hold a special meeting with just one item on the agenda and.
Right. Then, we we need to decide, i- is there a national program that we can bypass the bid on it? Do we need to go out for bid? Do we need to declare an emergency? Do we need to use a special purchase thing? I mean, there's gotta be a.
Well, you're asking multiple questions and you're like, Mr. Paycheck, I'll let him answer, because we're of different opinions.
Okay.
I'd kind of like to hear your opinion. No offense, Mr. Paycheck, but if you have a different opinion, I wanna hear that.
It's not an emergency. I think that um, I think that I'll reach out to the National Buy Board, I think there's a subscription. And we'll ask them if there are vendors that sell CAT and Generac, you know what I mean? And see, and and see if they're there. I know when, I know when we looked at the ambulances, I mean, they got back to me in twenty-four hours. The the actual, actually the vendor, for all I know, McAllister might be on the, might be approved.
Right, they're a big company.
You know what I mean, they're a national company, so if they're approved in another state, or if they're approved by the feds, then Indiana, well, they're they're approved in Indiana. There's a list of reciprocity, so I mean, we could find out.
So maybe we could do that, and then you're gonna give your answer here in just a second. But then, as as Joe stated, we'll put together a meeting for next week at the latest, I guess. Not these gentlemen, but this is a workshop, so apparently somebody for three months was able to spell twelve thousand dollars. I know there's not enough money in her budget for that, so I will, I also like to find out where, why this was.
I'll tell you, I asked that question. Want the answer?
Yeah, I do.
I'm not getting mad at anybody if you're listening, because I don't think it's been built yet. So you're gonna be seeing that bill.
So somebody, I'd like to know who who made that.
I I don't know about that. But it needed to be done, so.
No, what needs to be done is commissioners and you go and ask for an emergency and declare an emergency, because they don't have enough money in there. That's not the proper procedure.
Three months ago, it might have been an emergency. I found out at the same.
I'm just saying, Mr. Paycheck. Believe me, I, so we still need to talk about that, whether we like it or not. So the office is gonna be in a room next, our next meeting anyways, so. Alright, Scott, you got the floor.
Thank you, sir.
Someone throws you in the middle of the lake, you have to swim somewhere, you gotta do something, so that's where we are, we're in the middle of the lake. Fair questions, and again, this is law, this is a matter of interpretation, what's an emergency, what's not. We're talking, talking about the health, welfare, safety of these inhabitants of JDC. Presently, we have a temporary generator up, that's not permanently connected, it's a temporary connection. And as you've already heard, ad nauseam, there was an issue when we had the power outage. The fact that we're just talking about this, that puts us on notice that we know what position we're in. And I'm not trying to go down rabbit holes or just talk about every potential disaster that can happen, but God forbid if something happens. The power goes out, it doesn't function correctly, whatever, and there are issues, I'll leave it up to your imagination of what might go on if. There's issues with those uh children in there, that exposes us to liability too. So when I'm talking about health, welfare, safety, these are potentials. I don't have a crystal ball, we could keep the temporary generator in there forever, it's it's fine. I just can't say that as a matter of fact. So Mr. DiMartino has a strong opinion that this is not an emergency, I I respect that. I just wanted to bring this up, there's another way of looking at this, and I I think probably the best course. Is what Mr. DiMartino's talking about, we go out, see if there's a program. And uh, Mr. Skia has been nice enough, because we're using his work product. So anyone else we got in here would have to go through the rigmarole, if you will, or go through the work to determine what we need and how we're gonna do it. So I'm fine with that, I just wanted to let everyone know what money we're spending every month. And 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 the uniquity, if you will, or not uniquity, but the complexity. Cause when I first heard about this issue, it's like, oh, no, no big deal, it's like me going to Menards to buy a generator, it's a big deal. And and it takes time, so uh, I I say we just proceed with what, wait to see what Mr. DiMartino finds out, we'll go from there. And if we need to call a special meeting, we will. So if, if guy's saying that it's not an emergency.
Understood.
So so if we, and we take into consideration counsel's opinion, as we always do. And then we look at that, we look at the special purchasing thing, and it'd be nice if if we have legal opinions. On all those different things, if if in fact, we are gonna have a meeting next week, so that we can hear from you guys. Hey, yeah, it qualifies for this, it qualifies for this, eh, we don't think it qualifies for that. So that we can make an educated decision based on legal counsel.
Reason one thousand forty-five why people hate attorneys, no attorney is gonna tell you exactly.
Right.
For sure. Yes, I'll be the first one to tell you, calling this an emergency m- might be a bit on the fringe, if you will. Or on the penumbra of what an emergency is. I'm just concerned about if something goes wrong with this temporary generator and the child gets hurt in some way, shape or form, and then there's more exposure to us. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't say one way or the other, but I'm just trying to do my best to advise everyone about potential pitfalls down the road.
Right. Mr. Paycheck, can you get, can you get our Christmas card this year?
Negative. Not even coal.
It must be in the mail, well.
In the mail. Thank you. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. So you wanna move on to the next topic?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. You said this was the easy one.
I thought it was.
So so this being, this being Monday, the ten. By Friday, we should have some new information.
I can use my credit card to ju- to pay the subscription for the National Buying Board, and then I'll get reimbursed.
Absolutely. If they've got a generator sitting out there.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't know that until I get the peek behind the curtain.
But in other words, if time is of the essence to get this.
I I.
Information in case we do have to call a meeting.
I understand.
Alright.
What's your pleasure?
Friday.
No, what's your pleasure for the next topic? Okay, so. I wanna talk about the building and the building in general. And this is not about placing blame on anybody. Over the years, the county has not had, you know, we've not, we're not a very rich county. And then a number of years ago, we didn't have tax revenues for a long period of time. And things in the county, like Judge said regarding the juvenile center, just has not really been kept up and maintenance. And I understand that's why Mr. Keel is so adamant about putting together a capital improvement plan, so we know and we're able to see these things. Cause all we're doing is reacting. And now with the building that we've had, the the building that we have right now, you know, you had this injury to it. For lack of a better word, with the water loss, and now, once you've had the injury, it's sort of like somebody who hasn't taken care of themselves. And they go into the hospital and they have a surgery, and then when one thing happens, you notice all the other stuff that's going on. You know what I mean, you go with a heart attack, they find hardening of the arteries, they find diabetes, they find all those things. And so now, uh, just recently, uh, folks were looking at some invoices. Uh, for um, antifreeze, for lack of a better word, for glycol. And realized that over the last few months, we've gone ahead and we've spent almost twenty thousand dollars in fifty-five gallon drums. Uh, for glycol, because the cooling system in this building is just not working. There's a problem with the cooling tower, and it came to a head when we started moving in the fifth floor. And we weren't able to go ahead and look at or get the temperature monitor on the fourth floor and the third floor. So, um, A- Andy Skia met with Arctic, they went ahead and gotten all these uh blueprints. Uh, Mr. Karanka has looked at it being an engineer. So I I'm gonna give you the short version of what I understand from a layperson. When the jail was um built, there, the air conditioning unit was, the cooling was split. To some, to some extent. One of the, one of the vendors or subs under there was in the middle of the project and the sub went bankrupt. And then somebody came in and with that, the job was not pretty much done to spec. Based on what's going on, maybe it was for the year two thousand and one or two thousand and two. But now, twenty-something years later, it's really starting to fail, sort of like somebody who's been eating a lot of cholesterol. Or too much sugar their whole life, it's starting to fail, and so that's going on. And so, um, they, the vendors have done uh some. The vendors have done uh, some troubleshooting of the area, so I'm gonna allow them to speak of. Of this, to give you an idea of what's going on and a potential temporary fix. But in your capital plan, Mister Keel, gonna have to look at a permanent fix. And Mister Cunningham, that's gonna require a lot of nitroglycerin. On my part, too. Okay, so why don't you come up and explain the cooling stuff?
Hello, Andy Skiat, La Porte County Project Management, and Marcus Electric, um, here to speak to you on behalf from La Porte County Project Management. This is Greg Paul Junior from Arctic Engineering, and Adam Werther Spoon from Arctic Engineering. Um, so. Basically, where we noticed there was a problem was um, where when we were done with five, fifth floor. And we went to do the balance test on the H V A C system. So they had the balancer company. Mechanical test and balance came out, where they put the cone over the diffuser, and they measure the air coming out the bottom to make sure that they're slow, and we're gonna get adequate cooling. And when we went to the fifth floor, we went to do the test, and we basically had no flow. Coming, no flow, meaning at that time, out of the register. So uh, then we knew there was a problem, so then we thought, well, we'll go shut off. The cooling to fourth floor, shut off the cooling to the fourth floor, little better, still no flow. So then we said, okay, well, now we'll go shut off the piping to the third floor, and we'll have plenty of air then, so to speak. So shut off the piping to the third floor, and some flow, but still not even enough to get five to balance. So uh, we knew we we had put in all new equipment um, at the time, since the H V A C is a complex system. Um, before we proceeded with our work on floors three, four, and five, uh, when the commissioners and council awarded new equipment, new piping. Um, I talked with Adam, and we decided the time that, you know, the project was a design build, but due to the new floor plan and the complexity. We wanted to do our diligence and make sure that the the new floor plan was heating and cooled properly. So Adam and I decided that it'd be money well spent to send those floor plans out for engineering, for the mechanical work. So Arctic took the the new design by the commissioners, uh, we sent that out to Superior Engineering. We had, we took the same B T U's that were in place before the water loss. We kept those existing B T U's in play. Because we assumed that that's what the system could handle, you know, coming, coming from the pumps. Uh, we had that new piping size laid out, which we turned over the premise star, that when, you know, we awarded them the piping. And then Arctic uh, ordered the units, the replacement units off that. Um, so we knew that our piping and our units were adequate. Because we had that engineered during the design build process. So then we started chasing down the existing infrastructure. And that's when we noticed that there was some work done in the two thousand and one alteration work, which obviously we weren't around then. That we believe uh, was improper.
Yeah, I was around. So I think D L Z was the actual uh, bill designer for the, they had experience with um, excuse me, jails. We also use Larson Daniels, and of course, we use numerous sub subcontractors. So I do, I remember the person went bankrupt in this particular project. I don't remember who they ap- who they pointed to. We actually did end up going to some meetings during the process, because we ran into a a whole lot of um, add-ons throughout this whole project, so. They ended up, some council members ended up going to the meetings along with commissioners at the time, Bill Hager and Marla Harmon at the time, and Clay Turner. So. And I I do appreciate your, what you guys came up with a lot of hard work just to do that, but I always say that, and I've said it numerous times. If it's D L Z or it's Larson Daniels or the person contract, I think we need to get them involved right now and find out what's going on. They've done work for us in the past, it probably will do work for the future, and so we need to utilize this. Issue and find out what happened. I, for example, know that because they were, they they went over on the building, they put a less. Amount of concrete for the footing, which totally upset the council, they found out, but it was too late. We can't go any higher than we are right now. It was built for only that level. But originally, we were supposed to build it so we could add three more floors if we had to. We didn't know what the future was gonna be. Well. The commissioners at the time made this deal. So I don't know if it was a deal made or what, we need to find out. And then since then, Randy, but you were on, but I know. I know you were, and so uh, Mister Cunningham, so was uh, Rich. We hired another company out there to do our heating and air needs, and they came out and matched the systems, put in new programs. We're supposed to save money, do all this stuff, and we had to hope, we paid for this.
And then in the courthouse? You're doing with Ameresco?
Yes, they did all this, right, yes, sir.
I didn't know they, I I just remember they did stuff in the courthouse.
So I don't know if they did things, because the jail was new, but we need to find out these companies, because we paid money for them to belt, to to work the system out. Uh, that doesn't solve your issues, but I'm always, we're always so willing to find out that we had problems, but we're not willing to call. Companies are very liable, reliable companies and find out what happened, you know, give us the particulars. If if somebody made a dumb decision to say, cut it out, worry about it later, that's another situation we can do nothing about there. Everybody's been deceased, that's on, that's been on that project right now.
In the Ameresco project that did the um, we did the units on the courthouse. The courthouse has issues. When it's too cold outside, it doesn't keep up with the work that's over there. I mean, the heat, doesn't heat it well. And I don't think it has it fully capable of cooling it either. And that was a, a project that was.
Spent a lot of money.
Just at the end of Earl's term, when I first came on, um, but it was designed to save the county money by doing all that. And they put all the new air handlers in and everything. We're still making payments on that.
Yes, control systems and all, control systems and all that. So I think those are the questions that we need to find out, not appreciate what you've done, but I, we're always still willing to not. Go and find out what the real reason is. So I think that, you know, the commissioners or council president or anybody could look that up.
See if there's any connection there.
So two thousand and one, we did the, we completed, worked on and completed the uh, the new courthouse. Then we moved all prisoners from the old courthouse to the new courthouse, and then gutted it all and rebuilt it. So it was a two-phase system.
You're saying, you're saying courthouse, jail.
Jail, jail, thank you, thanks.
You confused.
A jail, so it was a two-phase project. I only see the plans for one of these. I don't see the, so I'm, I'm either I'm missing it or.
Uh, so the advocates that we have here, so we provided those, we pulled out certain pages, so. Uh, the county maintenance, they were gracious enough, obviously, wouldn't have these in our records. They did some digging over next door. They found these, they were great help to us. So um, what what I pulled out here is just for the elected members. Um, I apologize for the small drawings, it's hard to see. So when we found, the email is pretty much the synopsis. If you look under the key takeaways and the proposed solutions in the first two email pages, pretty much the proposed solutions. And then if 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 these drawings were bigger, Councilman Karaka has a full-size set. The pages we provided, pretty much what what they are to show everyone is the redlining and and the boxes there, if they were bigger. And you could read them adequately. Again, Arctic's working with an engineering firm. After surveying the system, the information provided here is that the changes um, that we believe at the time. Have left us currently in an inadequate state to cool both buildings.
Okay, thank you. So, thanks for the big drawings. These have been on my dining room table with a notepad for a few days. And then looking at the bullets, I wanna knock out a few things. So, you know, we're, um, Lucy or Mister Zeiler. Came back with some details here. Uh, first off, talks about the leaving water temperature fifty six degrees. Do we know what the entering water temperature is? Do we have a delta T there?
Normally, your air, or your chiller, we, we are sending our service tech to figure out if someone with your controls firm. Or you guys here had put a program in there for that to turn down at that set point. Normally, your set went to forty four, forty two degrees. So, John Bowling?
Yes.
We're sending John Bowling out just to try to figure out why your two two hundred ton air-cooled chillers on the jail side are turning down that low. But at the end of the day, even though your chillers at fifty six degrees are turning down at that set point, the jail is satisfied. As we know, we all know, when you walk through the jail, it's cool, you're still two hundred tons short for your footprint of the two buildings. Just.
Okay.
Trying to make that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some kind of measure in terms of.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're, if, let's say we have leaving water temperature of fifty six, we should be somewhere on the order of a sixty degree water.
Return temperature.
Return temperature.
Yeah, and a forty two to forty four discharge.
Yes, but so what do we have? Do we know what the entry temperature is right now?
Right, right now, your return is at fifty six. We don't know if anyone over the time has put the control set point to turn down at fifty six. Fifty six degrees internally. Is the chiller old? Is it malfunctioning? Anything like that? Or did your controls op contractor, which, do we know who that is? T C, if T C S has that as a set point for a failsafe.
Okay. I was kinda surprised with the the glycol thoughts. Um, where's the glycol going? Cause it doesn't get consumed.
Well, that's no.
I would rather us not talk about that at this point in time.
So we're talking about leak.
Potential.
Okay.
The, I ca- will say there's no make makeup system, just so everyone.
Yep, okay, so there's no automated makeup, so it loses it, and you don't have the pressure, and you don't have the flow.
And yeah.
And you're picking up air.
You're picking up air, you don't know, you can't even add it properly, but.
Is there anything there for uh, de-airing the pipeline? You got the vents at the highest point?
There, there should be.
Okay.
There should be, there should be. At that, a perfect system will have a fifty five gallon tank down by your two discharge pumps. Build a fifty five gallon tank with a set point of X. Say it's twenty eight P S I. You're gonna fill a fifty five gallon open tank to X amount of gallons, and it's gonna maintain a head pressure. You guys don't have that. So anytime you do have a leak or air venting through, all of a sudden, it's gone, and someone's just putting a bucket in there.
Up in the penthouse, they're manually pouring it in up top.
Okay.
Which glycol at seventeen dollars and ten cents a gallon adds up pretty quick.
Yeah, so pre-mix, or is it concentrate? Some, yes, both.
Both. Seventeen ten is pure propylene, seven seventy is thirty percent.
You're purchasing both, your maintenance department to answer your question.
Yeah. Have we taken a, a sample off the system and taken a refractory reading, just to see what the concentration is?
Arctic Engineering has not. Normal, normal standards from Northwest Indiana are thirty percent.
Yeah.
Old times were twenty percent.
What the design spec is in it.
And I'm assuming, sure, I don't like to use the word assume, but two thousand and one, it was probably switching from ethylene to propylene. I don't know, does anybody know if it's green or pink?
I heard it was pink.
Propylene, so you're already. At at propylene, you have a, a not a good delta T. But you gotta, everybody is changing that, so you're already buying the better stuff, but you you have less B T U's per ton. So it's not as efficient.
Yeah, so whatever the machine's capable of, you're limited by your material.
Exactly.
Can I just one, one point?
Go for it.
So one, I think, sort of answered your question, I know what you were saying, but the good thing about glycol, we switch it over, because we use, we use. We're using the millions of gallons out there at the mills, but uh, it's a water-based solvent uh, solution.
Propylene is.
Yes.
Yeah, not ethylene.
No.
Disposal, yes, you have the water base. So if you do have a leak and it goes down the drain, you're safe.
That's, that was just referencing that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I I knew you were going some.
No, I know, I mean, I'm just going to, you know, five hundred gallons of.
I get it. I'm just mentioning a fact, that's all. Thank you.
So, I'll take it as a cue for back to me. Alright, so when I look back at uh, um, Mister Zeiler's report, I look at the west side chiller never should have been removed. It is more of an opinion than a, than any kind of factual statement there. I'm looking more for some numbers behind it. What supports the?
I'll start with this one.
Based on the two buildings that you have here, the annex.
Specific, so when, when we talk east and west, when we talk the east, we're talking the jail. When we talk west, we're talking the complex for everybody's information.
Thank you.
If we specified by complex.
Yes, that makes it easier. The jail, um, when the renovation addition came out in two thousand and one. They sized that for a two, two hundred ton chiller for, for that side of the building.
Just for the jail?
Just for the jail.
What ton again, sir?
Two hundred tons. Those documents showed the existing cooling tower and the chiller in the basement on the west side of the building.
The complex.
The complex side, thank you. And it was shown that it was supposed to be remained in place, um. But from what we understand, after going through the drawings, it shows it's still being there, but then talking with um, the maintenance.
Doug Newland.
Doug Newland, um, that it was removed sometime between two thousand and one and what we can see on Google Earth History. Two thousand and five, it was, there was no cooling tower on the complex side of the building. So the complex side needs two hundred tons, and the jail side needs two hundred tons, but currently, there's only two hundred tons total in the building. For both sides of the building. Anecdotally, that would explain why it was always super hot on the fifth floor. For at least as long as I've been here, yeah.
And humid.
And humid. Yeah, go hand in hand. No, earlier you mentioned about the cone test at the, at the register. Obviously, the chiller doesn't drive airflow, so what's? What is it? Is this something within the system that says if I don't have this amount of cooling capacity, I'm not gonna turn on the fan? So I, I think you might have, might, maybe not said it exactly right. We do, we contracted mechanical test and balance to do airflow testing and balancing, as well as water or hydronic. So they came, they came out, we put, I'd say fifteen different fan coil units, those are the, the heating and cooling units on each. Each office space on the fifth floor, and they were able to balance the air coming out of each fan coil to the diffusers. And they're able to balance the hot water going through the coil of the fan coil. And they got to the chill water, and they weren't able to get the flow on, through them. So they're measuring in G P M, correct? On that side.
Yeah, uh, as you guys do know, with H V A C, you've got two separate entities. You've got Adam as the fan, and then the piping is myself as the, as the G P N and the B T U's. That the fan balance is good to go, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's the pumps, it's the tons of cooling and the flow that you don't have.
That's. That's kind of what I figured everything was, but when I started hearing fans.
Things are good, correct?
Yes. Airflow is fine, just there's no cooling behind it.
You can blow humid air around just fine.
Okay. What kind of condition are the pumps in?
The, the pumps are.
How many pumps do we have there?
There are two pumps on the complex side of the building.
Yeah, so you have, if you go back in two thousand and one, on the jail side, you have two pumps, and standard is. One pump is N plus one, so it's your pump plus a backup. And then the original design, they had two pumps running in tandem, plus two pumps as a backup, so you had. And through cost cutting, they went down to two on the jail. On the building side, on the ja- uh, complex side. There was a pump per floor and a pump per zone on the first and second floor, correct?
Yes.
Now, they have, for some reason, around two thousand and one, two thousand and two, they eliminated four pumps. And you guys just have two pumps. And of those two pumps, neither one of them are working great. One of them is very bad.
And and they're the backup, so you're currently running on a two hundred and fifty G P M pump, I believe it is, uh, two hundred, two fifty. And for lack of a better term, it sounds like there's marbles in the bearings. And then the other pumps, it should be the backup was a five hundred and eighty G P M, which isn't even meant to run on the existing system. So you really don't even have a backup in place for a bypass.
The backup that was left, from what we can tell, was the tower pump.
So it's not even adequate to turn on. If you turn that tower pump on, in essence, you would starve the, you'd pull everything. If you could even run at that G P M, the system, you'd then starve the jail, the east building, and they would lose all their coo- cooling, cause you pull it this way.
So.
The way that the buildings were tied together as we.
With the bridge.
Through. With, originally, day one, in essence, in the jail, you would have had two pumps, and then the, and the. And complex, you would have had your zone pumps. The delta T between those pumps would have. Took two hundred tons to feed the jail and two hundred tons to feed the complex, and they would have communicated and not sucked one dry or the other. Since it changed, and you had two, and you have two that are mis-sized in the complex. If you run the cooling tower, you will then starve the jail. So you can't run the cooling tower, because there's no communication on the bridge line. So you have one pump essentially in the complex.
Yeah. So, go ahead, what do you got? Alright, then I'll go. Um, so looking at that backup pump, the one I mentioned to Doug, the possibility of if, just to at least get that. In place to be a little more prepared, maybe have a little bit better flow, since the one sounds like, I would say gravel over marbles, but.
Either way.
Terrible. Um, some kind of circuit setter or V F D applied to that smaller pump. To where then you are reducing the flow, because you're reducing the operating speed, or that you've got a, a circuit setter in order to offset. The amount of effective flow you have to the system.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Yeah, if you just start, you can't, a- as you know, just adding a V F D, you can turn down the pump. That'll get into you, but when it gets to the impeller and the design head of a pump, the V F D can only do so much of turning that down.
So how about a circuit setter system, out beyond the pump to where you actually have?
You can, you can turn down your triple duty valve down to X to get a head pressure, but if that, if that impeller is a ten and a quarter inch impeller up there. You, and you have to open that and shave it to get it down to not push as much. Your C V through that triple duty valve's gonna be so great, you're going to either not get the G P M flow, no matter what you do. Your C V through that triple duty valve is gonna be so great, you're going to either not get the GPM flow, no matter what you do. Or you're gonna hear and it's gonna sound like a train going through all your pipe.
Okay.
So what do you suggest if if instead of just knocking this whole thing out as a start? I mean, i- i- the project and doing everything, i- is it, I'm I'm hearing you say that. You're gonna have somebody come out and maybe look at the controls to make sure that that fifty-six degrees isn't something that's programmed into there? Is that, am I saying that right?
It's colder, there's still not enough.
Yeah, so even if you get your, so Adam and I discussed internally to send our service, I I'm the piping estimator and project manager. Adam's a sheet metal estimator, project manager, I'm sending out the piping service manager to make your air cool trails around your jail. As optimal as possible, to get them back to what we would say is, this is the best that a twenty-year-old chiller can do. No matter what, you still have two hundred tons over there.
Right.
You can't use that two hundred tons and get any more than you're going to in the complex, cause you need its own two hundred tons.
And my next part is is the pumps, is there a chance that the pump just isn't putting out?
On on the complex.
The complex side?
Yeah, again, if you if you put those two pumps on one side and the exact same pumps on the other side, because essentially you have two five-story separate buildings. You still only have two hundred tons when you need four hundred.
I get I get that, I get that.
And that is based off engineered numbers.
Yeah, yeah, you have design day, but so uh uh correct me if I'm misunderstanding your question.
Yeah, he's saying that if that two hundred GPM pump was putting out thirty GPM today and um I did. W- without permission, I'll apologize, um that we I did buy a new pump pack with the pump and the impeller. Um it was around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars, but based on the condition of the one that we heard with Mister Kranka, there is no backup in place. The only backup is that five hundred and eighty GPM, which we can't even run on the system, even though it's located in the complex basement. If you lose that two hundred and fifty GPM pump, you're also gonna lose all your cooling to the jail. So with the summer months coming, obviously, that's gonna be a problem losing cooling to the jail. Um maintenance said they they had looked, you know, they they looked for for a spare pump on their end. They couldn't find when it was several weeks lead time, we found one we could get in a couple days, um so I did, I did purchase that without approaching the elected bodies. Um at my own discretion, for the sake of if something goes wrong with that pump, that doesn't sound in the best condition, not wanting to lose cooling in the jail. But Councilman Novak's question was, say we put that new pump in and it's.
We get the pump in.
It's giving the full two fifty, say now for sake of conversation, make believe numbers, the one down there is only given fifty, will that help the cooling? Uh not with the bridge the way it is currently.
With with the bridge the way it is, there's no communication between when one building satisfied versus the other.
Is there a way to to make that bridge?
The the there's a, you could get a controls contractor. You could get a can, you can get a control controls contractor to talk between the two hundred ton chiller on the jail. And your nothing on the complex and put a control valve in in there. But that valve's only gonna open with the BTUs that are left that the jail doesn't grab, which is going to make probably the complex worse. Because it's gonna get, instead of whatever it wants right now, it's gonna get whatever that valve says is left, does that make sense? So if you made optimal pumps on both sides. You might get, on the third or fourth floor, you guys might get a little cooler. But when you come to August and everything, it's gonna just be probably worse, because now you're moving water all over the place and you're not pulling the BTUs out of it. Cause there's more flow, when you actually, the way it works is when you discharge cold water. Or glycol into a cooling coil, you hold that water there as long as you can for the fan to pull all the BTUs out. And right now, since if you make that better, that water's just gonna move faster and you're not gonna be able to pull all that out.
Got it. I just thought maybe there's a way between the controls and the pump that we could. Not necessarily have a permanent fix, but in other words, it would make it more tolerable or usable for the third, fourth and fifth floor.
The the, I guess the. Without grabbing and getting into, cause controls are a very fickle part of our industry, as you everybody knows. Putting a stopple and isolating the bridge and putting a lockable gate valve or ball butterfly valve on there. And isolating your two buildings and making it one and one with a backup bridge that you guys in the event of the jails down.
You could open it.
Open the valve up, I'm sorry, complex, you have nothing, but now we gotta give it to the jail so we don't get sued or or vice versa.
And there is no shut off on that?
Not that we can.
Current currently, we can't find any GPM meters, no flow meters, no, no, no.
There was a, because what they did is they installed a four-inch bridge between, you have you have pumps with six-inch risers that go all the way up the shafts. That feed each floor, they installed a four-inch bridge and they installed that four-inch bridge to dependent on the GPM and the delta T. Going from building to building, if they were communicating properly with your two hundred tons separate, but since you pulled two or since.
Well, there's two hundred tons.
One one was meant to supplement, so to speak.
Yeah.
So it, so if the two hundred tons in the jail was a little overworked for some reason. And the complex had was only using a hundred and ninety tons for easy math, it could help the jail. But the way they have it now and they took off the tower, it's just taking what gravity pushes its way, so to speak.
Or whatever, the the co- the complex pumps just grabs what's ever left.
So obviously, a gate valve in there would.
Uh uh putting a gate valve in this in the bridge and making the complexes to own building. Will right now trim uh help the jail. It will obviously won't help the complex at all, because now you severed the one building from the only cooling source they have. Because the the, on the jail side, you have two pumps that work well. And you have two six-inch risers going straight up, water's gonna go the path of least path of least resistance, no matter how well you balance it. It's going up and down the jail tower and that's why the jail's always cool, from what we could tell when we were walking through. The pumps over in the complex are undersized, are not working properly and and it's an undersized four-inch line. Going over for another six-inch tower and those pumps are just grabbing and throwing water up as high as it can, which now we know can't get to the fifth floor.
Even the size of the bridge, you have two six-inch laterals, so to speak, like he's saying in the complex, and you only have a four-inch pipe feeding them, so even.
So if this keeps up and you have the jail side. Cooling this side, what does that do to the cooling tower and and in the short term or long term? Does it, is there a break, a problem with a breakdown on that side if you're trying to use?
Which might be why you're getting a fifty-six degree turned out, because you're running as hard as you can over there.
Well, is that the same thing as a freezer that would be starting to ice and stuff? Because it's just getting so cold, because it's being used so much and it's not, so I mean, what what's the outcome? You you know, if this keeps going the way it's going, besides it being hot on three and four.
Your chillers over time might start to short cycle, well, right now you have two up there and they they should be alternating. And at worst case scenario, as they get less efficient, as time goes on, they're gonna start short cycling more and more and on off, on off more often. Which is going to wear them out quicker.
So what would be interesting to see is when the controls guy comes in, where he once got the primary, any other ones the backup. To where once you get above a certain threshold, say sixty, seventy percent on the primary, then the secondary kicks in.
Yeah, which is what we want bowling to do, just look into all of that.
Are they are they both pretty much the same size systems?
The two buildings, other than one and two, from what I can tell, for the jail.
Ballpark, I mean.
They both need to two hundred tons, right?
Yeah, they both need to two hundred.
Something, would it would, the reason that jail is cooler is because the jail windows are like this wide? And it's reinforced concrete versus versus in the complex, we've got floor-to-ceiling windows. That loot, I mean, in the, we're bringing the heat in in the summer and.
Yeah, that's part of it, that's part of it, and again, your pumps are right, literally right here and your six-inch risers are right here. So it's pushing it this way, instead of across the four-inch bridge, four hundred feet that way.
All the way.
All the way up to the fifth floor on the other side. So the pumps have an easy time pushing it up and down the jail tower and you're right, if you have, I don't know how thick the concrete walls are. The small windows, the BTUs loads not getting shed as much.
Right.
So it's a, it's a.
I mean, a the square foot, the efficiency of all the glass in the complexes works against everything we're trying to do here. Heating and cooling, so.
So like I said, I had this sitting across my table for a while and was looking at it and then, of course, when we walked the tour through the um. Mechanical room in over here, I look at it and say it's not a straightforward necessarily solution, right? We can talk about dropping another two hundred ton chiller into the building or on the roof or flying with a helicopter, however you wanna deal with it. Um but there's still gonna be other infrastructure that'd be required to be designed in order to make this a truly balanced system, right? Between the two buildings, we know that we have to sever that bridge and put in a separate cooling system to make it ideal.
It's gonna be equipment, piping, validating, controls, the whole, everything's gonna come into play. Everything's gonna come into play.
And 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 as well, once you sever the bridge, you and a test and balance company and a control will have to go through your whole jail again.
Everything. Top to bottom, power, new pumps, drives.
Or is that nitro?
So another thing that I I believe was brought up is now that we're going into four and three, what are we gonna do about temporary cooling? Or what are we gonna do to cool the bu- the build?
So so in the meantime, our concern, we brought, wanted to bring to your attention was uh fives moved in. Um our our hope is this Friday to have four um tested, um move in complete by next Friday. Um three to follow behind that, so now our concern is due to the humidity and the heat. On the floors in the complex, which is Commissioner Haney has alluded to, according to the residents, it's it's always been there. But due to the recent investment into the complex since the water loss, we wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And see if the elected officials were would like to consider some temporary cooling strictly to protect. Uh the current investment in the complex from the humidity and the heat, um while a permanent solution can be put in place.
I guess. I'll speak, eh I guess in the short term, I'd like to see. I mean, we can look at, talk about that at a meeting, that we can actually take some votes in the commissioners as well. Um but in the meantime, um checking the pump and and the controls to make sure that what we have there is putting out. Everything, I guess, or that it's working as best that it can for what it is. You know what I'm saying? Just so that.
Find a leak, and find a leak also.
Right, and if there's a leak, we find the leak, you know.
The fix we can right now.
So. That's that's the short term, that's the that's the, that's the bullet point, what do we have to do right now?
So myself and and Greg Junior and Adam, we haven't held this conversation, but we're not. Due to the existing filling process and the existing uh pressure and air relief. We're not sure, in fact, if it is, in fact, a leak or if there's just air in the system, correct? For when they need to add glycol.
Without having a. I'm sorry, uh without having any type of, again, it's uh if any of you know what a glycol makeup station is. Without having that, you you have no idea, if you've got that fifty-five gallon drum and those aren't that, those aren't, but.
Get about two hundred and fifty gallon drums.
Or two fifty, yeah, yeah, so if you have that, you mark, you just draw a sharpie line, hey, where'd fifty gallons go overnight? Right now, we don't even know.
It's not even on the controls, literally, there's an old needle gauge up in the penthouse. And I don't know when, way before who even Doug Newland's time, he said when he came here, it was here, I don't know how long Mister Newland's been here. Someone with a sharpie line put a mark marker on the needle gauge and said the pressure should be here. I mean, there is so many.
The pressure there now?
The there is so many deficiencies in the existing system.
Is the pressure near the sharpie mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of this stuff is, I'm not gonna say impossible, but the time and the accuracy in which you can actually trace it down. And and stand at this podium and tell you most definitely, here's the problem, it's hard because the existing system doesn't allow for that degree of accuracy.
Something so simple as, and I know, I know this is as simple as this, but it is in general, I have a hot water heat system in home, so. I had a well-encumbered uh boiler for fifteen years and I replaced it, but. So something so simple as going with a cup and go open up every little valve and at the beginning of the year and bleed the air out, makes a difference. I'm not, we're not saying this is the answer, but we surely think that we need to take some steps to try to fix it, look at least. Uh try to figure out what we have, those little leaks or whatever the system is. It makes a huge difference, example, I in my mind, my furnace is well-known, since you guys do this all the time. If there's something that we might be able to improve by doing it, now what, is it gonna fix our problem? No. Again, Randy said, right now, we need to find out what the problem is.
The difference between that situation and this situation is square foot and line size. So again, without a uh glycol makeup station, always holding X P S I on the system, you go bleed a little bit. Pump's still running, cause you gotta have the pump running, you bleed a little bit, all of a sudden you go upstairs, you bleed a little bit more, that pump kept, now that air pockets on the next floor over. And you never had constant P S I pushing onto the bladder tank or the expansion tank, you're not going to ever. It the the time to chase that out, you could send a guy through the jail for three months, by the time, oh wait, now we, now we're out of cooling. We don't need cooling anymore, now you're back in the heating mode, so that's the only difference.
I'm telling you, for twenty years, they did that, so I've been a smart. Is it possible to put a refill s- system on there?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I I don't know who whose decision that that may be, but.
It's not very hard, neither. But but bottom line, if if the complex unit chiller. And the jail chiller. Were running at the best they could, you're saying we're still undersized by two hundred tons.
Cause you don't have a complex chiller.
Right, there used to be one.
Right, so bottom line, even if it was running the best it could and we were getting everything out of it and it was sunshine and rainbows, we're still.
Yeah, you need four hundred, you have to.
Right.
Hey, if I may, um we discussed with something else earlier, there was a thirty-one week lead time to get something installed, delivered and installed. If we were to try and add a new two hundred ton chiller. Parman, what is the lead time on that?
So in mechanical world right now, they're switching from one thirty-four and four four ten A refrigerant in all chillers, they're going to five thirteen. So lead times on chillers, depending on vendor, is ranging from thirty-five to forty-eight and fifty-six weeks.
What kind are you looking at?
Uh we, I think that's a design question for.
Yeah, we have, everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Five thirteen, what's coming?
Oh, no, no, not talking. I'm talking, are we looking at like a York?
I think you guys in Lepore County Project Management to have and kinda tell us what you want, cause I think I kind of coordinated.
We work with all train carrier, uh Dyken, what's uh?
No, train, train carrier and Dyken are the probably. York kind of out lately, with with a solution that's the least invasive. Now you guys already kind of understand the scope of what this would cost or be to do this. Instead of running new six-inch mains or anything like that, what. Uh talking with Superior that I wanted to kinda do is put an air-cooled chiller up on the roof, on the old cooling tower rails. After it's verified that it can withstand that and run refrigeration lines all the way down to the basement. Copper, you know, three and five eights or whatever that math works out to, to a heat exchanger. And then in there, switch and switch that building, the complex building to water and eliminate glycol. Because now you don't have, you have refrigeration on the roof for your temperature exchange and you have water in your building. But with H P A C, as you guys know, there's seventy-five ways to design a building. So that's a conversation with, you get into, if you V E everything out, we might be back where we are, you know what I mean? So there's cost over here and cost over here, this is what we're, somebody all agrees on.
So if we were to bring in, if we were to bring in a temporary unit. We're talking probably another, you know, kinda like the same discussion we had earlier with generator, we're talking probably a container type unit. How would we pipe that in?
So we we have that here, if you look at uh at uh one here with the Lepore County Project Management.
Very clear.
So the the last page of that would be where the a drawing, uh where the unit would sit and the pipe routing.
So I came through with um uh sales rep, was that last weekend, two weeks ago? Last week and tried to locate, I can't put a two hundred ton air-cooled chiller on a semi-trailer under the bridge. It can't shed the BTUs and as you know, you get farther and farther away, it goes up. Um for temporary hoses and temporary power, so if we could kinda go where this in the alleyway in between the overpass and the building. I can, we can fit an eight-foot by forty-foot trailer tight to the building and core holes to the basement and tie into. The six-inch risers feeding the complex and then isolate the bridge from the jail. And isolate the pumps in this basement to where then we could start a whole new kind of design. But that's just one half of the fix.
And then there would still be room with the unit placed there to get a single vehicle through to the parking lot between the complex and the courthouse, cause I know that's utilized.
But that comes at a price tag of twenty-seven thousand, roughly five hundred a month.
So the first month.
After the install and the takedown cost additional, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta do some valving, we gotta.
Yeah, you gotta do some valving, we gotta work on the bridge, obviously four hundred amp feed to the temporary and the piping.
Alrighty then.
I guess I'm wondering what what went wrong in this process that led to us finding out now?
Uh, so we did no balancing until we went to test out the fifth floor, so we took the information off the existing units. We came in with the water loss, um we came in with the water loss, we, the building was supposed to be heating and cooling fine at that time. The square footage didn't change, there was so many BTUs per floor, we took all the information off that equipment, um. Took that BTUs, put it in a pile, took the new floor plan, took it to the engineering company. And then we moved those BTUs out across the floor, which there was enough BTUs and equipment to satisfy that floor. And then until we turned the new equipment on, which was only located in the floors we worked at, three, four and five. The equipment outside of our work area, which was on the roof of the jail. Was not holding up to its end of the bargain to provide our equipment what it should.
So the engineers didn't catch a problem with this as it was being?
They didn't even look, we we would have no reason to look at that existing equipment, that that's all located up on the jail, it's in the jail. All we took was the BTUs in the work area and dispersed that for the new floor plan.
Because, I mean, the reality was we're replacing units, eh, for, we're on the fifth floor with units, newer units. Comparable.
Yeah, same.
It it should all work the same, right, examples.
We would have never thought they took two hundred tons of cooling off the building twenty some years ago.
So, Justin, I asked that same question when we did the tour and one thing that if, since I'm used to chillers. Cooling equipment more so than just buildings, like what we're doing here. It's going, the BTUs for, basically the the chiller is sized for the square footage and the volume of air. And then the air handlers that are using that chilled water are then just the newer ones become. More efficient on how they use that chilled water than anything. So they're gonna size it based off of what space they're they're running.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there is no square footage added to to the renovated area based on the water issue.
And if you ask people with, which we have, it's always from what we can tell, then warm. Those far back as.
Now that we remember. Si- since I've been here, yeah, and over three and a half years. I've been here for the, never visited those floors before taking office, but yeah, they never had any business there, but.
Alright, thank you.
And and you well have or you do have, so to speak, what you had before. So right now we have three valved off, um almost completely to provide cooling to five. We have four partially open, which we're gonna hopefully need to open more for for next Friday for the health department to move back in. So you have what you always had, but it's it's not adequate to pass the proper test.
The cost estimates that are on this page here, uh. Only talk about the uh the cost of the um, the temporary unit, wh- what is the total cost of this project?
We don't, that that's, that would be a way out, that would be months worth of work to to put a realistic number to that, cause it's gonna involve. Pump package, piping, equipment, setting of that equipment, wiring of that equipment, wiring of the additional pumps. Um, new controls, new graphics for those controls, new valves, new meters, all that would have to be interlocked and communicated.
Fair to say this would be in excess of a million dollars?
Way, way north, way north, yeah, way north.
You have this also designed, uh do you wanna go cooling tower and bundle in the basement again, do you wanna go air cooled chiller like you have on the jail and glycol? Yeah.
Yeah. This may be a question for Mr. Di Martino, is our insurance going to cover this?
Absolutely not, no.
This one's expensive.
Are are there any, since we're gonna have what we had before, so it's gonna be a little warm. You know, a little warmer than it should be, for example, on the fifth floor and. Is there? You like a new chiller, twenty-seven thousand dollars a month to rent, is there plus setup takedown costs? Is there something we can do internally? Or alternatively, let's say, to take some of the effort off of there, like obviously. The winter, there are plug-in heaters, I'm not, I'm not.
The answer is yes.
Just take a little bit of flow, obviously it's gonna take more electricity to run those, but twenty-seven thousand dollars will.
The only reason I'm jumping right in is Mr. Di Martino already asked that question to me. He wanted temporary units placed on each floor, say based on the square footage, I'm. Randomizing here, one in each corner and one in the middle, um so those units are still gonna generate condensation moisture, so. Um, and he, so in discussions with Arctic, by the time you put those units in place. Rent those units, do permanent condensate piping, either put it in a pump and pump it into the existing condensates, which have to be wired. Drill it through the floor and gravity put it to the condensate down below and you create the heat. And then you have the chance if those temporary or actually permanent, but temporary condensate pumps fail, you have another water issue. We felt that proposing the, this solution outside was more practical for the building type, but we did survey. Like, you know, you get at your house a little unit, you'd set in the middle of the floor, cause that was the original ask from council, but um I don't feel that. For the safety of the building or protecting your investment, I don't feel that's the best route to go.
Okay.
And each, each floor roughly needs about forty to sixty tons of cooling, so. Like a small unit you would wheel into a corner is two tons maybe, so that would be a lot of, a lot of those sitting on floor, it'd be hard to walk around.
Yeah, I I'm just thinking, just a little, not getting perfect, but considering, you know, like for the last three and a half years I've been here, you know, they've. You know, our building apartment, for example, which gets the worst of it, you know, cause they're right there. On the, on the side that they face them, which sun comes in all the time, odds is the health department underneath, but especially on the fifth floor since. Yeah, just something to, not twenty-seven thousand dollars a month, but just a little something to take the edge, a little more of the edge off. You know, cause I mean, again, they've been in there for three and a half year, you know, at least three and a half years I've been here with this is going for twenty years, it's. Is that, or are we thinking that some of the rust and moisture issues we have with some of the pipes, for example, that we had to replace? Was due to the inadequate cooling that caused some of that condensation to stick on there and may have helped that um just. Yeah, again, that part, if if we've got, we've got limited, and council's obviously more aware, it's more of a council function, but. We've got limited funds to get us through the end of the year and if we're looking at rentals at the JSC and some of these other things that are coming up, it's. At some point, we really have to get tight on our fiscal budget here, cause we're, we're running out of uh-ohs. You know, and our rainy rainy day is just, it just keeps raining. I know it's not you guys' thing.
We're shoring, we're shoring up the insurance project, so.
Right.
That's why the rainy days is short, so.
So yeah, you could, you could put some temporary units on that, on a floor, like the fifth floor per se. We would have to exhaust the the condens or the condenser air that that puts off the heat. We have to either cut a hole in the roof or pull a window out, put some temporary louvers in to be able to relieve that heat. We gotta, gotta get out of the building, cause you're, you're putting two tons of cooling in, but you're just letting the heat come off the condenser, you're gonna, it's a. You're balancing it negative that way.
So what the idea be if you, same idea, if we. I know it's not sounding a good idea, but we need basically heavy air for next four months or so, that we just. Relocate the fourth, the fifth floor and just concentrate in the third and fourth, cause we're having a problem with rise and you're never gonna get to fifth. Until, till we can fix the problem. It may be still what we did before, like we did, we temporarily put them, put them in different departments and, you know, have them use it. That at least would get us, you know, four months to get us above the water, four or five months.
Maybe, I don't know.
I'm just showing an idea, but I'm just saying, I know that's not, that's not the most desirable solution, but. If we did that, at least, cause you did say that no matter what you did with the fifth, whether you shut the third or fourth, you're just not gonna get it to come up to the fifth.
They they'll all be the same, just because of the pipe size, it's by the time it goes across the bridge, so in theory, we only, we only tried five. If we shut off five and four, three would be in the same situation.
But they, okay, you started out the meeting saying that to get fives, you shut three, then you shut four, but. We, we most definitely have survived for twenty some years doing this.
Yes.
We have some new systems are put in place, new piping put in place, so it. I think that we might wanna just try the attempt to the fifth floor and also to fix our leaks and do all the little stuff we gotta do right now. I know they're Band-Aids, but they're, to see if we can get the system up to par and at least get that. Um, so back to that question, this getting rid of two hundred. So did we get rid of the two hundred because we brought, put a brand new one there, cause remember the building that we had over here was half the size, a little less than half size. Cause there wasn't offices for the court, for the jail, there wasn't the other half the jail. So, did we have the two hundred unit and we put a new one up there thinking that was going to take care of it, or did we have? Two of them up there, we decided to get rid of one, there's some confusion on how you're gonna state that.
From us investigating the as built from the original seventy-four building to two thousand one renovation addition. When the building was built in seventy-four, there was a two hundred ton chiller for the complex. When the renovation happened, renovation addition in oh two, two thousand one happened, there was a second two hundred ton chiller for that. Addition and that side of the building, the renovation. It, it appears that spoke, the other one, the existing one from seventy-four should have remained in place, so there should have been four hundred tons.
I'm not disagreeing with this, but somebody in their wisdom. More efficiency, because remember again, there, this, there's actually a half that jail with this complex.
Our engineer looked at it and he said, why, why did this ever go away?
Either way, you can take tons per square foot of any type of building.
I'm agreeing, so, but somebody still did it for for twenty years, we worked with this dude, so.
That is true, those are facts.
Those are the facts, I don't care how, I understand, yours, yours is different facts, I I don't disagree with your facts either. But I believe what happened was is because they had bought a brand new unit that somebody in this engineering study thought a two hundred would. Be good for both buildings, good or bad or different, I don't know, but I think that's the question we need to find out. And through DLZ or through L and D, and and especially the subcontractor, what was going on at time. They still have records of this stuff, I know they do, they keep all that stuff, there's no way that they dispose of it, yes sir, go ahead.
It'd be interesting for us to find out if we actually paid for that chiller or that's not there.
Absolutely. Well, I think one thing to answer though is, is if you look at the seventy-four drawing, it's in your packet, I think second or third page in the back. You see where that chiller is, the footprint is in the. And then you move to the same floor plan in the two thousand one drawing. And you see where it's obviously not there.
And there should be a two thousand one and a two thousand two, because again, we built the building, then we went and demoed the other one, so there's, there was, there's. Some time frames where it could have been taken out, I don't know.
Yeah, and and just to be clear for everyone, the, one of the main reasons we're here is because. For a matter of record, we wanted to do all the test and balance, you know what I mean? And currently, we can't get the system to to pass current standards, so I'm strictly speaking from, I'm not speaking what happened before. Who or why are moving the fifth floor, that doesn't pertain to the three of us, I'm strictly speaking from the point of you have paid us. Um, this very significant amount of money to redo this whole building. So now all the glue for the flooring is water-based glue, all the new ceiling tile, so we're strictly here. Uh, to be beneficial, let you know, there is a problem with humidity, there is a problem with heat, so if that would happen to affect. The new materials that are in that building, then we we don't wanna be like, we asked about the generator, why are you coming to us now? So as soon as we found out there was a problem before that floor glue separates, before the ceiling tiles bow, before any humidity gets in those walls. We wanted to bring it to your attention because of the investment that was put in that building, what happened before. Uh, that, or what you do with personnel, obviously, that's not our decision.
I understand it.
Thank you.
So the.
Dehumidifier would be a lot cheaper, eh, eh, put up there right now, if we had, if we could make something work. Uh, it's not the answer, there's no answers here.
Yeah.
But nor nor is the four million dollars we're talking about, my estimate is about four million dollars for what you guys were talking about.
Yeah, so Mr. Yagelski had a good point that I was just, I was about to say is.
Sorry.
You know, the, no, 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 you're, you're, you're right on in your train of thought, if we're worried about humidity, I mean, I don't. I'm, I'm not an expert in these things, environmental sciences, things like that, but I know, for example, in my uh, uh. Lack of better term, mechanical room, I have a dehumidifier in there, um it's heated in the winter, but during the summer, there's no. Air exchange in there, um I know in that room as compared to the rest of the area. With the dehumidifier in there running, it obviously lowers the humidity, it just drains right onto a floor drain and, you know, how it goes, but. Um, it reduces the temperature in there simply because the humidity is dropping, makes it feel cooler. I don't, it doesn't feel like in that small space and it's a large dehumidifier, it's producing a whole lot of heat. Can we just put a handful of, you know, three hundred and fifty dollar dehumidifiers from Costco in there and. Call it good for the next four months until we can run out till next year, till we can get the new chiller ordered and put it in and installed.
We'd be happy to look into and propose any solution, obviously the elected body would suggest it's just a matter of square footage that we're up against, that that's. That's the problem.
I mean, again, it doesn't have to be a perfect, perfect solution, but if it's enough to knock it down to acceptable levels. To get us through this, you know, next three or four month season, you know, three or four months into next year, again, you know. Three hundred, three hundred and fifty bucks can buy you some pretty nice uh dehumidifiers from there, I'm sure there's better options, bigger options, whatever, but I'm just thinking that, you know. For the floors that are up there, four or five per floor will be fine, we have a ma- maintenance team that does, does building checks anyway, first thing in the morning, they. Even if we don't have an automatic drain for it, first thing in the morning, send a guy through, dumps the trays, last thing at night before they leave. Dump the trays, they hold like two gallons each of water, again, it's not perfect, but it's a sure sight better than twenty-seven thousand dollars a month.
I think it's an option, but I'd like to. Professionals think.
Square feet each, so.
Change the temperature up there enough to.
A question for the lawyers, um, have we determined if and how we're going to hit this?
Do you want me to just ask you a question?
No, this is. Hang on a second, I just asked a question.
I'm sorry. Could you go again?
I'd like to hear from the professionals as to whether or not dehumidifiers, if you think dehumidifiers would change the temperature of those rooms enough. Or is it kind of the look on your face right now kind of answers the question that it.
The perceived, it, the, the, just real quick, the perceived temperature for the employees, it's gonna feel a little cooler, it won't. Change the actual temperature on the dial, but the other side would be by dropping humidity, then we worry less about the glue and the warping and things like that.
I agree with, I agree with the warping and stuff, but as far as the cooling, making it cooler.
There's a felt temperature versus real temperature.
I get it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not working in, in the office and what I'm used to working in or not working in is different than everybody else. If you have a dehumidifier next to your area in that many square feet, yeah, that it probably, you probably will feel it by your desk. But in that many square feet, three humidifiers, dehumidifiers aren't gonna really do anything, no, you're sensible and your light and heat aren't gonna change that much.
Yeah, the answer we say, what, a number, we don't have a number. A number with square footage, we can figure out the number, he just made a statement, we put it up, so, what we're talking about, sorry. We're talking about is just trying to get ourselves through some situations here, not ruining what we put in, maybe make. I mean, don't tell the good people of Arizona, there was a hundred and sixteen degrees, it's dry heat and it's still okay, are you serious? Cause you, I could take you there and I could take you to Alabama and tell you the difference and it's all it is humidity.
Yeah.
So I'm not being sarcastic, but I am, so it does make a difference.
I agree, I, and and Mr. A, I'm not disagreeing with the, that's why I just wanted to see their opinion on it.
Dehumidings, dehumidifying what you're saying of three or four of them, they can take four hundred square feet. Time, at twelve hundred, if put four of them twelve hundred square feet and you got twenty thousand square feet up there. It's.
Five or six thousand square feet each, but I mean, it just depends on. Not the little ones from Walmart, but you know, I'm just thinking about the.
Yeah.
Larger ones and I only reference Costco, cause that's where I got mine from and they take care of my whole house, so it's.
You guys want to pursue, talk with Andy, yes, that, to get through this four months of August, September and October. And see if this is something that, what you guys wanna try, absolutely, but as far as. Designed to mature, what the parameters are, what we need to meet or what we're accustomed to meeting, no.
Were, were, weren't we using dehumidifiers up there to help drive that out, big industrial ones? Or what were those?
The serve process.
Serve pro, is it just blowers?
Pans and air filtration.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you had a question?
Counsel, thank you.
Sorry to jump the line there earlier.
We're not even in, in, looking at that, this was just brought to everybody's attention, I mean, if this is such a big job, you're gonna have to. Engineer it, scope it and put it through the whole process.
I just asked you at the beginning, cause it always gets harder to ask that question.
Yeah, clearly, I mean.
Alright, Mr. Yagelski, you were kind of touching on something when I came back in here, I think it's worthwhile for us being liaisons to, um. Building maintenance and of course, what we do outside of here, uh maybe put a, a scope of work together for maintenance, just say to go check a few different things.
I could find me, meet with you, I think, uh next weekend, if some time off, you can, if you had a day off, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
And I, I guess, one of the things that concerns me, and I agree with you a hundred percent on that, is the fact that we're down to. Well, we have two pumps, one doesn't work at all, the backup pump.
Uh, the backup pump, nobody that I talked to in maintenance has ever bumped it to even know if it would run, because it's over double the size of the pump you're using.
Right, and then the other one sounds like marbles and yet, this is the first we're hearing about it. So I mean, it, it's, there's preventive things.
So I mean, it it's, there's preventive things, there's regular maintenance every year, that needs to be done on all this stuff, and that was the whole reason. To, and I'm not, that this is, we have a lot of buildings for one H V A C guy. But that was the purpose of having an H V A C guy on staff, not to be out. Replacing units and doing something that an outside contractor would do, but to be just going around doing the maintenance on all these things. And making sure everything is working, and it's a lot, I I'm not, this isn't a jab at Doug, because I mean, it's it's a lot of work, there's a lot of moving parts.
The good thing, Randy, is that we, example, we just still here, we don't, the system got the systems in place. Where it does electronically put the air where it's supposed to go and the and the building across from here. In Michigan City, it's all new, so we've we've taken a lot of the way, so I think that, and I'm saying that he's not doing a good job, but I think that. He can concentrate more on this particular project than anything else.
We need to focus more on maintenance, maintaining things instead of.
You're absolutely right.
Valves, you know, valves that, there's no way you could ever open them or shut them, is it?
Or pumps they'd ever turn on.
You might not want to turn that back the pump on, because you're gonna starve your jail, so.
And then we put it on and running it twenty four hours a different day, does it work, does anybody know if it works, I'm just showing an example, I. When we're throwing things out here, we're not saying these are long-term solutions or even an answer, but remember, we gotta do somethings. Do I know if this pump's gonna work, I I need to know that, this is something that at work, I don't, I get, I have, we have to figure this stuff out all the time. It's not, because I know you do too, in your in your job, so this is not throwing stones, but remember, you have to look at our side, we gotta figure out. You're not gonna get a new, you're actually all the units you're done in a year, so we're gonna have to do something, and either e- even those are temporary fixes, maybe you have to move some people. And not open the fifth floor, close the fifth floor backup, I don't know the answer, but it sounds like no matter what, the fifth floor is not gonna ever work. Even if you got a little bit of air on the third and fourth.
So the the ideal plan would be with the pump we bought to replace the one that sounds like it's the end of its life. Would be to put that pump pack where that five hundred and eighty G P M is, then you could.
So at least you.
Then you could operate the bypass, you could run on a new pump sized to the pump you're running on, and then the one that sounds like it's. At the end of its lifespan, you would be a backup for, if that's the appropriate phrase.
So we'll look for a meeting next week and we can talk about it then.
That would be the ideal situation.
Just say, hey, then we need somebody then from the commissioners, you say, hey. We need a representative for the commissioners if we do that too.
To get the approval on the pump that he bought, so is it gonna replace the pump that sounds like marbles or in it with the new pump?
Leave the pump with marbles where it's at, take the new pump, put it where the five hundred and eighty G P M pump is that nobody wants to run. Activate that bypass, run it on that pump, and then shut the one with the sounds at the end of its lifespan off, and then you'll have that an emergency.
So you can do that without flip flopping the pumps?
We hope if the valves work. Little piping.
Nope, got it. All right, we'll pour it in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Sure, gonna be quick.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I am gonna be quick, so I did send you all an email, a link today. With the statement of loss that I sent to the insurance company in December, so the state. No, I sent an email, yeah, yeah, so the statement of loss that we submitted was sixteen million dollars. To date. Uh Andy's number here is different than what I have, but based on what I went. We've received somewhere, we've paid somewhere around nine point seven million dollars. We, you all have funded about four point four million dollars. And Chubb has paid the rest thus far at five point three million dollars. So my numbers are a little bit off from Andy's numbers. Three weeks ago on Thursday, Chubb came out and we took a an inspection, it was three weeks ago, right? And he said that he was going to be cutting another check, but it's like the Wizard of Oz. Uh we don't know what the check is gonna be for. We do not have any more money to pay any of the bills that are going forward. We still have four hundred and change that's sitting there for the personal property. Which is the A C V for the personal property, once we expend that money, we'll be able to get the R C V or the. For the for the difference, for the personal property. It looks like uh there's a current balance that's due to La Porte County Management of just under seven hundred thousand dollars. And um it looks like the the job to complete to get us to the to the end. Is gonna be three million dollars, so um at some, at the next council meeting. The commission's gonna have to come to you all to discuss potentially funding some portion of this. Hopefully by um that time, the commission would have received a check from Chubb. But I don't know if it's gonna be ten dollars or one point five million dollars, and based on. I I know I've been saying this for months, but based on my conversation with him. We're probably not gonna be seeing much more come through from him without, I mean, without twisting their arm. For lack of a better, so so that's where we're at, I believe, La Porte County Management has estimated, you know. The projection for the May billing, I don't know if they've done it, is a million dollars, and June and July about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. Clearly, putting up the drywall and frame and and doing the work in. Three and four are gonna be a cup part of the covered loss, but I don't, I just don't know what Chubbs. Gonna do with that, so that's where we're at today. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Yagelski.
So I had a partial home fire at one of my rentals and uh they came down and they gave me estimates, so. The price they 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 told me they covered, they meant the covers nail screws down to that, but. So this sixteen million loss, are we within their parameters of saying that was a loss, or what did they say to pay?
No, so this is the problem, or this is the the rub. Remember, I wasn't involved for the first. They agreed to time and materials. They, this was not estimated, um you know, like what you did, they came out or just they gave an estimate as to the job, they paid you. The A C V, they said you repair it, they would pay.
Labor pay. Rate of pay.
So if you remember when this, when this first started, there was an agreement to pay hourly rates per trades. And then materials, and then when we got halfway in it, things started getting sticky. With the insurance company and they were saying, well, we wanna see this, and we're like, that's already been demoed. And so, and then they took the position, if you might recall, that a number of the things, like when you pull things off, the problems with the pipes. And the problems with the mechanical piping, they are taking a position that the code code upgrades just were not, y- y- you know. Were not part of the loss, which clearly that's a rub and that's gonna have to be decided at a later date. And so what they've done, or what I think they've done, because it's sort of like, uh it's behind the curtain. Is they're saying, well, any of the new tech work that might be related to that, or any of the artic work that might be related to that. We're accepting that, so if they build a thousand dollars and five hundred was related to something that they think is just an upgrade. Because he used the term upgrade multiple times in our meeting, then he's not allocating. The time and material, the time to that, do you see what I'm saying? With the, we dealt with the material, i- i- a lot of the material issues, so I think that's where we're at, but I just don't know. What the next check is gonna be.
So the numbers should roughly says, if I'm counting, it's roughly uh four million dollars plus, you think, no, three million, so we should be. Seven million that we have to come up with so far.
Well, I think seven million will take you to the end.
To the end, right, no, but that's what I meant so far is unless something small changes, but it does just some numbers, but. So we already know, we knew walking into this that that seven million dollars is gonna be probably either negotiated or. We'll go through the, have to go through the court system or whatever, but that's just a process that we all knew about it from day one.
Right, but you're never gonna get, you're never gonna get the seven million dollars.
Correct. I I said negotiated with or whatever, I mean, I made a negotiation with even mine, it's like, here, we'll settle it at this, so. Because I said some things that went over cost or whatever, so it necessarily, it may not be seven. But we might be able to get more into the half of that range, I don't know, but it looks like there's, it's always a negotiation tool that.
Well, this is not gonna be a negotiate, we're pretty, I think we're pretty much done negotiating based on.
So that, it would have to be the legal system.
A little insight to your question as far as the statement of loss number, so it was either March or April twenty twenty three. Um we have a meeting in this room here with seven or eight individuals, um with Ken from M K A, who was a representative of Chubb. And at that time, I penciled out a spreadsheet with all seven of us, or eight that were present, and it was.
He said a couple of weeks, so we're past a couple of weeks now. And you know, we we have currently some outstanding bill.
So the deadline for appropriations is tomorrow, correct? So, well, I haven't seen the appropriations for this month, so. So if we need, if we need to get something on the twenty fourth agenda, we need to do it now.
You you will have to, right, to.
So should I, should I put a million dollars on there, something, obviously, if we owe six hundred and, we owe seven hundred thousand dollars right now.
When is the next, has the next bill been sent already?
Uh mail come out this week, this later this week, but obviously, that's not due upon release. Um what what we did, just so we're all on the same page and clear is, is we received a partial payment for March and April from the auditor's office. So um it was very detailed what, you know, the partial payments were for, so on the construction end, I combined both. Those payments and I paid all the subcontractors current for March, so I didn't wanna withhold their money back to. March and try to say, well, you get paid for March and April and you might not maybe get anything, so I combined the two partial payments I got from. The auditor's office for March and April, paid all the vendors in full for March, took the balance that was left from those two parcels, deducted it from May. From April, and that's the current balance due, so so technically, there's no bill due. Because it hasn't been sent other than what's outstanding, which would be for April.
So I guess my question is, can, if not, if we don't get it on tomorrow, by noon tomorrow, we're waiting till the end of July.
Right, but I I'm.
Unless we call a special meeting.
I'm confident that you are gonna get some check, I just don't know if it's ten dollars or.
It might be safer to put it on just in case, that's.
So what if we, you just put the, put the seven hundred thousand dollars on it and not to exceed seven hundred thousand, a million?
Yeah, just put a million.
That's funny, I mean, you don't need, we haven't even billed for May.
I have it ready and I told Tim today that I wasn't seeing it out because I figured we'd have to put something on tonight.
I think they can just put it down and if we have, if it goes less than that, it goes less, not exceed.
And then not to exceed, I think we need to add not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for the juvenile service generator. So that we can, we can get a generator ordered, so money, if the money's appropriated not to exceed. We can go through the process, it's not gonna be a, oh, we know what we're gonna do now, and then we go, wait, we don't have a council meeting for two, for three weeks.
And that's fine, because you don't have to, you don't have to take it up, you can always take it off the agenda, and it's not available on, you know, some type.
Doesn't mean we have to spend it, I, we can appropriate it for it, but we don't have to spend it, right, so so we're one little step ahead of the game, so.
I got it.
Got that?
Yes, and rainy day with other.
Real quick, any questions, so how much money have left in the Michigan City Courthouse Project Fund? Because they, I know we keep sneaking up on that thing, is that, do you have an idea or no?
It's over a million.
I think it's over.
Just throwing something out there, put that as one of them if if we can.
Goes back in the rainy day.
That's where it came from.
For like a. Came from emergency, so rainy day.
Okay, so there is money there. All right, anything else?
Uh no, any other questions?
To confirm not to exceed one million for the flood and not to exceed three hundred thousand for the generator, correct?
And the the one million would be the rainy day, yeah, the other one could be A R P or. Now, come on, quit messing around. All right, that concludes today's workshop, thank you.